All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, what is it, March 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Carmel. The board members' names are in front of you on the dais. We have Mike Carnazza, code enforcement officer, and Greg Fulshetti, town council. The way we operate is I'll ask you to come up, state your name and address for the record. I'll swear you in unless you're an attorney. And then we'll hear your case. We'll poll the board members for any questions or comments, then I'll open it up to the public for any comments and questions on any application. When we close the public hearing, there's no further input, so please keep that in mind. Will you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Our first case tonight, if anyone's here for it, it's gonna be, or it's off the agenda because it's been, as part of the new code change, that area is a mixed use and it's an allowed use in that area, so that's for application pipeline. But we had closed the public hearing on it last month anyway. So I'll look for a motion to dismiss without prejudice.
The use aspect only.
Use aspect only, of course.
The other variances were granted at the last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, January, sorry.
We messed up and didn't adjudicate on that portion.
But then in the interim, the code was adopted.
Right.
And for several years, it obviates the need for the use really.
So I'll look for a motion to dismiss without prejudice.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm here, Julie. Okay. And application number three is Giovanni Mara Beal. They are looking to be off the agenda as well. They're gonna change the location of the pool that they had requested, so I'll look for a motion to dismiss this case without prejudice.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rose, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if anyone's here for that case, you can go home. Unless you wanna stay. All right, so application number two tonight is Minu Deceo for variation of section 156-45.2B1, seeking a variance to add accessory apartment over detached garage. The property's located at 5 Garcia Trail in Mahopac and its tax map 53.16-1-25. So the code requires or allows, are they here this evening? Oh, okay. An apartment in detached building built before 1998, and what's existing or provided is building built in 2003. So the variance sought is to allow an accessory apartment in detached building built after 1998. Will you come on up? Please speak clearly into the microphone. You can change the direction of it down towards your mouth, or you can pull it off of the holder there if you want to handhold it.
That's good.
All right, good evening. State your name and address for the record.
Minu Deceo, 5 Garcia Trail, Mahopac, New York.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Can you bring that a little closer? This is being recorded for minutes, so.
Is that better?
Again, you could also take the microphone off if that will make it easier for you. Vin, I don't know if you wanna assist her?
I got it.
Oh, she got it?
Okay, yes.
Okay, bring us through your situation, what the, this was built and you guys didn't know you needed a variance and?
No, we'd like to renovate the upstairs of the barn for my daughter.
Okay.
And her daughter.
They're actually seeking permission, not forgiveness.
For once.
Oh.
Yeah, I went out there yesterday, saw it.
She's a nurse and a first responder, and she actually helps me out as I'm aging, and I help with the childcare because she works nights and days and they call her.
All right, so this is a new plan, not an existing plan, obviously, so.
Correct.
And Mike, it's an allowed use prior to 98, but?
Yeah, if the building was built before 1998, when the first code came into effect, you can have it in a detached existing structure, but anything built since then, you can't, they don't wanna have two houses on one lot.
Right. So, and because of the need of your health situation, that seems to like make sense, right? Each case is judged on its own merits here, so. Is the, there's no other property you can purchase, right, to bring it into conformance so it would, it could be subdivided or into two separate lots?
It actually wouldn't help with this case because it's not attached. It's not a land area issue in this case.
Okay. Board members, any comments or questions?
So it's just, it's just a two-bedroom?
Yes.
And it's about 840 square feet? It's, is there anything up there now, renovated?
No. No, it's just an empty space used for storage.
Okay. No insulation, something? You gotta do a full restoration.
No, there's no insulation.
So it's not used, but there's, there's air conditioning or some sort of heating in it?
No, not yet, no.
So what's the LG unit?
I'm sorry?
The LG unit on the picture?
Oh.
I'm gonna have to swear again if you're gonna speak. It's okay. State your name and address for the record.
Rebecca Deceo, 5 Garcia Trail.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
That's not upstairs, if that makes a difference.
So downstairs is the garage right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the garage has heat and AC?
Mm-hmm.
But not the upstairs, okay?
Correct.
What's in the garage on the bottom?
Storage, my cousin uses it.
Can I assume you're gonna put windows in?
Yes, I think dormers would have to be added. There are some like skylights, but that's, yeah.
I would think you'd want windows in there.
They're required to have them from New York City.
Yeah.
The building requires an emergency escape and rescue opening, so.
Okay.
Every habitable room will have to have a way out.
Okay.
So Mike, if this was connected, you would allow it as long as it fit the percentage of square footage of the house?
And they get border health approval and everything else.
Right, I know septic and all that, right, right. But, right, if it was connected, it would be, all right, okay.
Have you contacted the border health yet?
Not yet.
Well, they have to go through this process first before.
Yeah.
Before I started dumping money into it, I wanted to know that it was possible first.
Exactly. And then after this, if we give them approval to go to the planning board, right?
They don't need planning on this, this is a permitted use, so.
Okay.
It would just be border health for the septic, correct?
Border health, building permit, and CO, yeah.
Right.
Which would be the next step. If we approve it tonight, they have to go to the board of health, they have to get approval there. If they don't get approval from there, it's a moot point, so. All right, Julie, any questions?
No questions.
Well, you're good?
No questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you, guys.
You guys can stick around for the end of the meeting. I don't know how short or long it'll be, but, or you can find out tomorrow, you can call. Is Dawn in tomorrow, Mike?
Dawn is in for a little while, I don't know how long. Call me if you wanna leave.
Or you can call tomorrow and?
I'll keep track of everything at the end.
Yeah, you don't need to fill that, if your, if your public is coming up to speak, just, we ask you to fill out that form on the podium.
Can you meet me anywhere?
With your name and address, email address, all that stuff, phone number. All right, application number four, Michael and Thomas Gilmore for a variation of section 156-15, seeking a variance to subdivide the lot, and in order to do it, a lot with variance would be required for both lots. The property's located 153 Schindig and Hill Road, Carmel, New York, and its tax map 87.8-1-5. Excuse me. Lot one is, for lot one, the code requires 200 feet, 188 feet would be provided, so a variance of 12 feet is being sought, and for lot two, it's the same thing, basically a mirror, mirror image. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Paul?
Paul Lynch, Putnam Engineering.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Bring us through it, please.
This is a 6.08 acre parcel that the Gilmore's are looking to break into two parcels. We'd gone to the planning board originally, and we did show them the two lots that actually would meet the code, that would not need a variance, but you ended up with a crazy lot line that came back and jogged back to here, so you had, you ended up with an appendage that was stuck in between the two lots.
Robin Peter paying Paul, basically.
But, quote unquote.
And the planning board doesn't wanna have crazy shaped lots.
Yeah.
The more rectangularly you can get the better.
So, we believe this to be the best configuration, so in order to do it, we just divided it, we got as wide as we could get it, which requires the 12 feet on, for both lots, is a width variance.
Makes a lot more sense, for sure. The variance is very minimal, there's no other property you can purchase to bring it into conformance, right? You're landlocked on all sides.
Correct.
I met the owner actually out there last night, went out to look at it and came out and went over it with me, and yeah, absolutely makes a lot of sense to straighten the lot line, and I think it's one straight, direct line, correct?
Yes.
And it just turns out that the calculations are the same for the acreage?
Yes.
Wow, it's unbelievable.
It's kinda bizarre, but it happened.
It happens. All right, board members, any questions on this one? Seems kinda cut and dry. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this application? Sir? Come on up. When you're done leaving the podium, just leave your name and address and phone number and email address and all that.
Sure, my name's Jeremy Siegel, I live at 23 Wilderness Trail.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. So I live at 23 Wilderness Trail, like I just said, which is the property directly adjacent to where this variance will be, and I'm the first person to say, I wish everybody to do whatever they wish on their own property, and I never wish to encroach upon anybody. However, when I purchased my house and this property in 2018, it was, a big part of that decision was the character of the neighborhood, and the fact that we had a lot of space between all the houses, there was a nice rural feel, lots of wildlife, hardwoods, et cetera, and in the past few years, that lot next to us that was empty when we came, there's now two houses on. So obviously, when I got this notice in the mail, I had some concerns, thinking that now we're gonna have a third house stuffed in where originally there were none. So that's my concern, I'm not here to outwardly ruffle any feathers, but I do have concerns about, you know, the constant stuffing of more and more houses into this smaller area.
I don't think it's out of character for the neighborhood, I mean, driving up there, you know, you see, even coming up the hill, you see house next to house, next to house, though in my opinion, it's not, not out of character.
Yeah.
It used to be one acre, now it's three acre, so these are three acre lots. It used to be only one to build, some were grandfathered in that way, so.
Yeah, well, just from my perspective, from where my house is, the amount of trees that have been removed and the changing to, like I said, the local view and the wildlife and all this has gone down significantly.
You're on the right side of these lots?
If you're looking at the, at the lot, I'm on the right.
To the north.
To the left.
You're Siegel.
To the right, I'm Siegel, yeah.
Yeah, so you're just to the north of that lot line there. It looks like there's a stone wall.
Right.
How big is that stone wall, Paul, there? Like, is that four feet high?
It's not high. No, far less.
Behind the garage.
Okay. But it looks like it runs that whole length?
It does.
Of the property, which is sort of nice, you know?
And this house is gonna be on the southern side of the property line.
Yeah, that's on the southeastern side from Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, they're kinda staggered from where they're being shown, too. It's not like row houses.
Very close to Schindig.
This is the one house he's talking about.
It doesn't show your house on this map.
And the other houses.
I mean, how far back are you set back from Schindig?
I don't have the map to reference.
I was there last night, your house seems, like, you're set back pretty far.
I'm the first house on Wilderness Trail, so there's six houses back there. I believe the smallest lot, which is a bit, a bit over four acres.
Yeah.
The other ones are between nine and 11, I believe. So, you know, there is some space for sure, but it is a significant change in, in the neighborhood and in what it looks like and when you're coming in, and like I said, with kind of the local environment, it's just, with the two additional houses in the last few years, it's been significant. So that on top of, you know, I know the last thing I'm trying to appease to is a motion, but, you know, with a newborn and having construction noises for years and years straight, and now a third house being slapped in there, you know, it's getting a bit cumbersome, so that's.
Well, the good thing about construction is it'll end at some point. You hope.
There's always the option, you can buy the land.
Yeah.
Paul, what is proposed, like, house going in there? It's a two-story, is there anything proposed, or?
It probably pretty much mirrored the house that's already out there on the adjoining lot, so it's two-story split level.
Yeah, like 2,000, 3,000 square foot?
I think it's about 2,000 square feet. It's called the Mahopac special. That's what Joe Kirwin used to call it, right? Back in the day.
It might actually add more value, actually, to you, you know, you just.
Okay.
Yeah, these are small variances.
Appreciate that.
I mean, again, I got the zoning.
12 feet, you're looking.
Board of Appeals notice, and I wanted to see what was going on, but frankly.
We can meet the code.
It probably would've been worse if they kept the lot configuration because the house would have different setbacks, and it might've been a different configuration, worse.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
They could still build on, regardless.
I don't know the topo exactly there, but, you know, you got, you got a good southern exposure on that wall, I mean, there's, there's a lot that could be done in the future.
Like what?
I mean, right now, all the leaves are down, too, so, you know, tree-wise, looking at it last night, you could kinda see clearly, but once the leaves come in, I think you'll have a little more screening.
Yeah, most, most of the woods have been cleared, that would block that, so unfortunately, that's not much help. Like I said, it's a short wall, I put up a chain link fence many years ago, which doesn't do anything visually, obviously, and the leaves are virtually meaningless, as is the, you know, the stone wall, like we said, but.
Yeah, evergreens are wonderful, you know?
I'm sure they are, but I wouldn't know because they're not there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, duly noted.
Could we condition it to put some more variety in along the property line?
You can condition it any way you like.
Yeah.
Reasonable, yeah, of course.
Might be an option.
I, I don't think it's, if you, did you go out and look at the lot?
I did. Legal buildable lot.
I mean, it's plenty of tree lines, in my opinion.
He's really only doing it because they reconfigured it, if they didn't have to, it would've been built just, we're not buying, right?
Like I said.
Claudine, just do me a favor, talk into the mic, because Dawn's gotta take notes minutes from it.
No, just, right, you just, you had to reconfigure it because it was abnormal and they wanted to make it more.
We reconfigured it because you ended up with an odd-shaped geometric shape lot.
But it's still a buildable lot that you would've built a house on regardless, because it's a three.
Yes, and we wouldn't have had to come here, you would've just have had this geometrically odd lot that nobody wants.
But same house in same spot.
Correct.
My understanding, though, and I could be completely flawed here in this, is that the issue is the frontage on the street, correct?
No.
No?
No, no.
That's what I was told by the planning board.
No, it's the way the lot width is calculated.
So then they told me the wrong information, but that's what I was told, that it was 188 feet and 200 feet were required.
That's the width, 100 feet of frontage is required.
But if, when it's a weird configured lot, you kinda take the average of, of the width.
It's the midpoint of the depth is where we do, we measure the width.
Got it.
So whatever that depth is, you go at the midpoint, you just do a perpendicular line, whatever the number is, and that's how, he was able to make it with a wiggle, he can make it comply by taking that out and making a straight line, that's 188 on both lots instead of the 200 that he could get the other way.
Understood.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right, anybody else wish to be heard? I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Julie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. All right, application number five, Centennial Golf Club of New York LLC, lot line adjustment for variation of section 156-61M, seeking a variance to transfer more than 20,000 square feet of lot area between parcels, 44.2-2-0.1 and 44.2-4.2, or dash two. The property's located at 185 John Simpson Road, Carmel, New York, and its tax map, I'm not gonna read them again, same tax maps. Code requires or allows 156-61M3E, up to 20% or 20,000 square feet may be transferred. What's being sought or provided is 49.7 percentage or 618,552 square feet, so a variance of 29.7 percentage or 5,998,552 square feet. Wow, that's a mouthful.
Yeah, the lot line adjustment law is generally for small little swaps of land, and we had this discussion early on, it's not generally used for this. My opinion, it should be a lot line subdivision merger, where they're taking this much land, but that's, they decided to go this route, so.
Okay. Everybody got that?
I do.
All right, good evening, guys. You all gonna be speaking?
I will, Chris Laporta, Pasco Engineering.
Okay, what's your address? Use your office address.
6 Front Street, Newburgh.
Okay, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, bring us through the application, please.
Sure, so we have a few items on the agenda, I thought the best way to do it would be to bring in a map that shows the overall project and give a high-level overview. This is the Centennial Golf Course, and the area where you see the townhome development is currently the parking lot of the golf course, and the adjacent meadow area that leads up towards the intersection of John Simpson and Fair Street. The, the, this, this matter, the lot line revision, there's an existing lot that just, it doesn't fit the shape of the development, or we'd, you know, if it was, if we were creating a new lot, we'd do a subdivision, but since there were already lots there, we're just moving the lines to make the, the development parcel, you know, make it, make it fit the development. In order to execute the project, we need to relocate the parking lot from the town of Carmel to the town of Southeast, so you could see going diagonally across the map the town line. And that's further down the agenda, we have that application to have the parking in another town or in another parcel. We ended up, this, this project has been in front of the planning board for a couple of years now, and it's changed form quite a few times, and we ended up coming up with this layout in order to, to minimize tree clearing and environmental impacts, it's, you know, similar to a cluster style development, which.
So the lot's already cleared for the parking lot, but would you have to do the same for new parking?
No, the new parking is in a grass area, it's part of the golf course right now, so it's.
So it's already cleared?
Yeah, it's nestled behind a tee box and a giant berm on John Simpson. The, the parking lot itself, we're reducing the size, right now it's a 271 parking space lot, and that's, it's oversized, you know, there's just piles of sand sitting there and stuff parked there, and it's, so we, the golf course, we worked with operations and came up with the number of parking spaces they really need, and we're going down to a 220 space lot in Southeast, and then the accessible parking spaces will be in the town of Carmel, closer to the clubhouse, and.
And that parking is for, like, events and golfers, or is it?
Yes.
For the condo association?
Exactly, that is, that parking will be for the golf course, for events and for golfers. We're providing garages, driveway parking spaces, and some additional parking spaces in the townhome development as part of the proposal. Do you want me to go, you know, one issue at a time, since we have a few agendas, and stick to the lot line revision?
Yeah, Greg, do you have to stay with one case? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, they may cross over for, for the information or questions that might be asked here, but we'll stay with one case at a time. There's definitely no way you can make parking fit within that development, I guess, Mike, they've been working with the planning board, right? Are these kinda directions from the planning board to?
This has been at the planning board for several years, I think.
Yes.
It's been bounced around and rehashed, and you'll see more as you get to the next application.
Yeah.
It's subdivision, building this, changing the golf course, moving parking into Southeast, and that's the variances that they're seeking, so yes, this has been hashed out, hopefully. Yes, but I'm saying this is the whole 22 acres.
Yep, we are through seeker now with the planning board, and we just appeared in front of the South, town of Southeast, since it's also a site plan application to them in order to have the parking lot in their town, so we didn't receive any real concerns from the planning board in Southeast, we're actually scheduled for our public hearing over there in the end of April.
So this is, this is a lot line adjustment, but because of the percentages?
Both, percent and area.
What's in the blue area right now?
The blue area is mostly wetlands.
It's all wetlands?
So it says.
It's unbuildable, that area?
Yeah, it's a DUC wetland.
So it says here, the board considers that the difficulty is self-created, this factor does not preclude the issuance of the variance? Can you kinda explain why this is not self-created?
These lots were formed long before this project was conceived, and it's just kind of a odd-shaped parcel as it exists right now, and just the footprint of this development, after, you know, working through the iterations and getting a project that works, it just, you know, it doesn't fit.
Could you reduce the number of houses, or reduce the number of buildings that you're putting up, or, you know, change something so it is not self-created?
Not really, I mean, the line bisects the project, it's very, it's in a really inconvenient location.
But based on what, topography, wetlands?
Yeah, the existing golf course, the existing main entrance to the golf course, the wetlands, the wetland buffers, that's the, really the buildable area that we confine the project, and we were looking to do a larger project at one point with units on Fair Street, we ended up removing that and dropping some density in order to, to get everything into one cluster and really avoid almost all tree clearing on this project and, you know, get an envelope that suits the project, so now it's a 60-unit townhome project, and yeah, it's what we've landed on after working through multiple iterations with, with our team and the planning board.
This is just, the parking is for the units only?
The parking lot in Southeast is for the golf course, we're gonna build a new parking lot there, which will be smaller than the golf course's current parking lot, and it'll also bring the lighting up to today's standards, it'll be all dark sky compliant and screened. There will be parking for the units, they'll have driveways and garages, and there'll be a few visitor parking spaces in front of the pool area and on one of the other roadways for guests of the townhomes. for guests of the townhomes.
So I guess for number one, could you show us on the map what, how it currently sits and what you're changing it to?
So on the map, the, the, the line here that has red X's on it is the old property line, you can see it kind of like zigzags across the property. The, the green is what would be transferred to the, the townhome parcel, so it'll create this more rectangular shape, and the blue would just get merged into the rest of the golf course parcel.
So the townhouses are just being built on the green area and then that little white thing to the right?
The green and the little bit of white over here.
Along the new property line, it's not in red, you know, Will? It's just in black.
So there's going to be that whole blue space between any of these houses and the neighbors on Fair Street?
Yeah, that, this is all wetlands, no one's, it's a DUC wetland, no one's ever going to be able to.
So the wetlands would be like a buffer, pretty much.
And you're building a wall adjacent to it, correct, to delineate the separation?
This goes away.
Is that correct?
A wall?
Wasn't there a wall right by the wetland that brings?
No, we don't have a, we don't have a wall, we're, we're, in our pre-application with the New York City DEP, when we were talking about stormwater management, there is a buffer area there, the current buffer is actually all manicured lawn, which isn't ideal for wetlands, so we asked them, what do you want to see there, and they said, we'd love to see a stormwater wetland there, so we actually think we're enhancing the quality of the wetland buffer by putting a stormwater wetland right along the existing wetland.
What's the elevation difference between the first floor of the condos and the elevation of the wetland?
I, it varies a little through the site, there's some pitch on the road, it's, it's not substantial, but it's enough, there's pitch, there's definitely a tier with the stormwater management ponds, and then it comes up to the road.
I'm talking between the units and the wetland.
It's, I mean, the units are up higher than the wetlands, they're.
I know the units are, but the grade, how high will the grade be approximately above the wetland?
Oh, I, if I had to guess, I don't know, ten feet.
It's substantial.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what I was looking, and I thought you were putting a wall there for some reason, I apologize.
What's the concern for like flooding and?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure the, the base flood elevation, if there is one there, I, it's on a hill, so there's probably not such a, an area of flooding?
No, no, we're not, we're staying out of any floodplains, yeah.
You're an X.
Yeah.
So if there was an area that held water, you want to make sure the elevation of the first, of the lowest floor is three feet above that.
Right.
But he's ten, eight to ten, it sounds like.
And Mike, you said before, the other way to change this property line is to do another.
It would be a subdivision generally, so you do a subdivision merger, and it, it goes smoothly, because it's not, you don't have to show that you're building a house on it, because you're not. So you do a subdivision merger, and it's the same process, but it's just, you're not looking for a variance of X percent.
So why, why didn't you look at that, or you, did you study that?
I don't recollect looking at, I thought we couldn't do a subdivision, because there was already two lots there, and we had to go for the Lot Line.
It's a subdivision merger, but it's, it's similar process, it's just that it wouldn't have needed the variance, that would have been the only difference, probably cost more.
Okay.
Who owns that corner?
Of what, right here?
On Fair Street, yes, this little corner.
Fair Street and John Simpson Road.
The, the corner right here?
Yeah, right there.
That's part of the project property.
That's all part, it's going to be built all there.
That's part of their, that's part of their property line, oh.
But there are no houses there, can you scooch the houses over to get them away from the golf course, or?
You're telling, move the houses towards the Fair Street?
Uh, there's not a lot of room to move them towards Fair Street, we left some landscape screening at the, along the Fair Street frontage. They, I mean, they fit pretty nice in, between the golf course's main entrance and Fair Street, I can.
Right now, what they're here for is, is the board okay with them doing a, a Lot Line Adjustment for that green area, which is larger than what's allowed, and I'm not trying to tell you not to ask questions, but that's really the scope of this part.
Right.
Okay, is that lot, right?
The configuration placement of the, of the units is not part of what.
Corrects. What we need to know is, is the, is it okay that they do, use that part of the code, even though what they're doing is over five thousand square feet and over fifteen, whatever the percent is that the code allows? So as we get into the next steps, when they're changing the golf course and the parking and things, that's when other things are going to come up too.
So Greg, do we need to adjudicate on this case now before going to the next?
No. There's three separate applications for at least, and you can, you should shoot them all individually.
Okay.
So number one is just merging all of this into one lot?
Taking the green part off of the big lot with the golf course?
Yeah.
And merging it into this lot?
Which is just that corner piece of the?
So that they can create that lot, which is blue, white, and green.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you don't have the same map, this map, it's the blue, white, and green.
Right.
Yeah.
This one.
Okay.
So they're over the percent that the Lot Line Adjustment Law allows.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand square feet over.
Did you say that the blue area is going to be owned by the golf club, or is it going to be?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Well, it's all owned by the golf, it's two different lots.
The blue area gets into the condo.
Just as a point of information, so, I mean, I know this isn't really about this, but with three-acre zoning, how do you get sixty townhouses on this little square? Is this ninety acres, or?
It's not three-acre zoning for multifamily.
It's not, what is it?
It's two different things.
It's a unit per acre.
Correct, it's different.
How, how big is the lot going to be? How many acres?
The lot has to be ten acres.
Let's see.
Is it over this eight?
I think it's fourteen acres.
That's correct.
Point three-sixths.
I'm just curious.
No, you're fine, I'm just trying to get the.
Is it a cluster? Cluster housing? Cluster housing that falls under another, another criteria?
There's a multifamily section.
It's the multifamily law, not the, not the cluster. So that's what they're able to use, is the multifamily law in this case, but, give me a second.
I'm just curious, because I live around there, and it's a very congested area, so to put sixty houses there in that tiny little intersection is going to be a lot. So that's.
They're not anywhere near having the site plan approved on.
Sixty-three units going in, sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty.
So it's minimum, you will have to.
Ma'am, you're going to get your opportunity.
The site shall have a minimum of ten acres. The maximum permitted density shall not exceed five units per acre in RMF and three-point four units per acre in an RMFA zone that was determined to be the residential zone at that time. So it's three, five units per acre is what they would be allowed to do.
How many acres?
It's not three-acre zoning, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way unless you are doing a cluster, you do a conventional map, get a lot count, and then you pull that out, and then you can use that as your, your number. That's correct.
Mike, what's the number of people in a unit, max? A unit, it doesn't matter.
There's not a max, it's based on, the square footage of a room tells you how many people could sleep in it. Is that what you're asking?
Five units per acre.
Is it seven point eight acres?
No, it's actually.
It's a fourteen point three-six acre lot.
Fourteen acres?
Mm-hmm.
Close to six hundred thousand square feet.
Fourteen times five is seventy.
It's not, we're deciding, the density is a whole other thing that the planning board's going to get to, and if they're past their density, they're going to have to come back to you on the count.
Right.
Okay.
So let, let's just, what's in front of us, guys, is just the Lot Line Adjustment, basically.
Twenty-nine point seven percent of five hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two square feet, that's the variance you need to make this happen with the new property line, and make that green.
All right, any more questions from the board? Comments? All right, I'll open up to the public, anyone wish to be heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
Just give me one sec. Alicia Bryley, I actually live on seventeen Kelly Ridge Road, Carmel, New York.
Okay, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do. So I'm an environmental educator, just to give you my background, and I'm also a United Nations delegate, so I just wanted to put that out there. So I had a question regarding all of this. Number one, is the Southeast, for the town of Southeast, the parking lot, is it going to be across the street? Because that's very dangerous for golfers to cross, to go over to the golf course.
No, it's all, all within that, that pro, same property line, it's not across the street.
Okay, thank you. So my other, I just wanted to state, with New York Environmental Wetland Protection Law, regarding the wetlands, there is no wall there, just so you know, just so you know, for reference. I wanted to also, just before I start, say thank you, because we finally received a notice about something near our area, and we hadn't received a notice in over thirteen years, so I greatly appreciate that notice very much, sent us. So the primary federal law protects wetlands, section four oh four of the Clean Water Act, and that helps support biodiversity and preventing floods and overall water quality, so my concern is, is about the drainage, because it's a pretty flat area, it's not so much a hill, and it's already a congested area, like, I don't know, my friend over there that said on the board before, but we've also had a building, building's just done on the back side of our, of our road, so my concern is the cutting down of trees, so I was able to measure the carbon level in the air, and it is very, very, very high, and it registered poor air quality. So my concern is regarding the, the, it's going to drop our property value, and I've seen it happen in other places, that's why I'm stating that, and with the construction being done by the county on that road already to begin with, everything is a mess, and the road was just redone, and now it's got to be redone again. So my concern is the construction vehicles tearing apart the road again, going through that whole process over and over again, and then regarding the environment, the zoning variance for all three of them tonight, the community members within Kelly Ridge, St. Michael's and Everett are all against it, we don't want this, can we make it maybe smaller if that were to be the case, not to have sixty townhomes, because I'm telling you right now, they're not going to fit. And the fire department, the fire department was slightly notified the first time, but I can also represent the fire department, because I'm part of the fire department, and I wanted to add that if it's going to be, I don't know how many levels now we settled on, but before it was three, it's going to be very dangerous for the firemen, especially if it's, the houses are very close together. So I want to take overall consideration regarding the environment, the congestion, the construction that's going to go on, and then I wanted to note, I don't know if it's on this map, it was the map for the project, it said Kelly Road on the back, it's Kelly Ridge Road, Kelly Road is on the other side, going towards Brewster, it's Kelly Ridge Road, not Kelly Road, so the map is wrong on that part, perspective. And just, we couldn't talk about Merrill Avenue tonight, I understand that, but that is a historic district, and always been a historic district, so I'm just concerned about the historic value dropping regarding that matter. And just one more thing regarding the environment, just so that you know, in that wetland, for this property, there's eastern box turtles, because I've walked in there before, there's eastern box turtles, there's spotted owls, which are very rare and on the endangered and extinct list, so I just want to make sure that.
What kind of owl was that?
That.
What kind of owl?
Spotted owl, and they're very rare in this area, so my concern is the overall wildlife and the water, especially with the Fair Street construction, like I mentioned, there's got to be more type of drainage of some sort, because now a road has been flooding recently, that entire road, Simpson and Fair Street from time to time again. So I'm also just concerned regarding the variances, it should be a no overall for all three. And just so that you're aware, when you build near wetlands, for the homes, it would cause shifting slabs, the slabs that they're on, that the homes are on, my grandfather's a builder, so I can speak to that, damp basements, cracked driveways, mold, erosion, clog, storm drains, and downstream flooding, when you build near a wetland or on a wetland. So I just wanted to point that out, and we should really start thinking about down the road and the future generations, what's going to be left in this town? This town just used to be farmland, so can we keep a little bit of that still? That would be great, and just leave it alone the way it is, and that's all that I have to say, but this just, this project should be stopped. Thanks.
Okay, we appreciate your concerns, most of those items would be geared towards the planning board when and if it gets back to that point, so just an FYI. Anyone else wish to speak? Oh, please, ma'am, can you come back up and write your name and address, and, if you didn't do that? And same thing for you, ma'am, as well.
Cindy Cole Bryley, seventeen Kelly Ridge Road.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to make you aware, also with environmental purposes for the wetlands, there needs to be a hundred-foot buffer.
Where?
Around that area.
That, that would be handled by the ECB, the Environmental Conservation Board, right, Mike, it hasn't gone to them yet, and the DEC, right, would have overview of it, because it's.
They show that on their map right now, just, they have the setback.
They have the hundred-foot setback?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to add, I contacted the EPA about this matter, just so that you guys know, Elise Eldon.
Okay. All right, any more comments from the board? Do you guys wish to comment back on anything that you heard from the public? We usually afford that, otherwise we'll look for closing of this hearing.
We're just closing number five, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think these are mainly issues that we hashed out through the seeker process, we, we do have a NAGDAC, but we require permitting from DEC, DEP, and many other agencies, so we'll continue to address all of those matters.
All right, I'll look for a motion to close the public.
One quick question, sir. Mike, what's going on on Fair Street? There's a lot of construction, it looks like they're putting in new.
Sidewalks, the county.
It's a county project.
It's a county project?
Yeah, that's a county road, so the county decided to put sidewalks, I think, all the way down to almost this area.
Okay, I thought it might be drainage, but it's not?
Not that I know of, but if they're, if they're doing stuff, they might as well do the drainage at the same time, you know, anything that's not, right?
Ma'am, you got it, you got it, please, just keep it separate from.
Relocating some utilities.
Can't speak, let's come on up.
Replacing utilities in the process.
They are?
Town stuff too.
Okay.
He's going to speak on.
But drainage is probably part of it.
All right, I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next case, same applicant. For variation of section one-five-six dash four-two-A, seeking variance to locate the required off-street parking to serve the golf course in the town of Southeast. Property is located at one eighty-five John Simpson Road, Carmel, New York, tax map forty-four point dash two, dash two, point dash one, and forty-four point dash two, dash four, point dash two. Code requires or allows one fifty-six dash four-two-eight-seven, location of off-street parking. What's provided is within the town of Southeast, and the variance required is the location of the parking. So from what I understand, you would have to get some kind of a perpetual agreement?
That's correct, the code, the code says that a perpetual agreement must be in place, that can be a condition of the approval if they, if you find that you're going to approve it.
Right. Do you guys have any agreement to that effect?
We're fine with that, we kind of assumed that would be a condition, so the golf course always has a parking lot.
All right, I just wanted to get that off my chest, that, before I forgot, so go ahead, bring us through your portion of the application and your reasons why.
Sure, I, I did already talk about much of this earlier when I gave the overview, but we are taking the parking lot, removing the parking lot in the town of Carmel, the two hundred seventy-one spaces, which serves the golf club, and moving it to the town of Southeast. It'll be a two hundred twenty space lot in the town of Southeast, and there will also be eight accessible parking spaces in the town of Carmel. The reason that they're in, the eight are in Carmel is because the accessible spaces are supposed to be located as close to the clubhouse as possible, so this location's actually much closer than they currently, currently are in the existing condition, so it'll, it'll be an improvement, and we also are downsizing the overall size of the lot, which, you know, it's kind of unnecessary, impervious surface, as I mentioned earlier, there's just a lot of like materials getting stored on the parking lot right now, and.
What's the reason for that?
It's just golf course operations, I think it's like there's sand piles and things like that there.
Yeah, they're.
But they'll.
Prepping the golf course.
Yeah, they'll find somewhere else to, to put that stuff on their property. Yeah, they'll find somewhere else to put that stuff on their property.
So how many spaces does the current lot have?
Two hundred seventy-one.
And the new one has?
Two hundred twenty-eight. Two hundred twenty-
Plus he said twenty in Carmel.
Two hundred twenty in southeast, eight in Carmel, so two hundred twenty-eight in total.
So it's a healthy reduction, like you said, impervious, so it should help watershed and-
I mean, then you pave over the current lot and put townhouses, so I don't know how net reduction that is, but-
But the existing parking lot is larger, was built to older standards. We're going to need to get DEP approval, which requires, you know, redundant treatment.
Storm control, storm drainage, depths, and a management system, right?
Yeah, that's right. We're proposing bioretention, that after it goes through the first filter area, it goes to a stormwater wetland, which is, you know, provides additional storage and treatment. And that's after the initial plunge pools, so there's a pre-treatment, and then two layers of treatment for the water. And, you know, we also need to attenuate it. We can't have peak flows that are any higher than the existing conditions. So we have a SWIP model, and we're working through that process.
So again, these are planning board issues, Will, but, you know, respect your wanting to know about it, but it's typically-
Yeah, it'll be zero net runoff of the property.
Okay.
Zero net, it'll be the same runoff that happens now, or less.
Hopefully less.
John, can you remember any cases we've had where parking was in another town?
Not in my twenty-some-odd years, no.
I can't either. Is there anywhere that we have parking?
Houston Road, a place that sells charcoal, I believe.
Yep, in Carmel?
The coal place in Carmel on Houston, and I think they have their parking in another town. I've been here too long.
Might have been before Greg's time, too.
That's the only one you know of, Mike. That's the only one you know of that-
Look, it's not an issue, as long as they have the agreement in place, right?
Correct, and it has to be perpetual, so that if they sell the other lot off to build houses or something, they have to maintain that for the golf course that's still there. It checks the balances.
And that same case is in front of southeast right now, correct?
Yes, we have an open application, and we have a-
So I'm sure they're asking for the same thing.
Yeah, we're going into the public hearing and addressing their comments, but they will want a similar mechanism. I think it makes sense to us, too. We want that.
Of course.
If they get, as far as final site plan approval, they'll be conditioned upon each other. You can't get one without the other.
So do we need to condition the variance for the perpetual agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it has to run to the, it has to go to the successors and assigns of any future owner of the property, that's all. Because right now, Centennial will be giving the agreement to Centennial, you own both of the pieces, correct?
Yes.
As long as it goes to the heirs, successors and assigns will be good.
Very good.
All right, any more questions from the board, comments? All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this? And if you guys come up, it's the same stuff. You know, we heard it already, so I'll afford you the opportunity. But if you have anything new pertaining to this case, you good? Okay, I'll look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the last case. Same client, applicant for variation of section one five six dash two eight A, seeking variance for relief of sections one five six dash twenty-eight A point six, distance between buildings, and one fifty-six dash twenty-eight A eight, perimeter building setback. Property is located at one eighty-five John Simpson Road, Carmel, New York, and is tax map forty-four point two dash two dash two, point dash one, and forty-four point dash two dash four point dash two. Code requires or allows one fifty-six twenty-eight A six, and requires fifty feet between buildings. What's being provided is twenty feet between buildings, and a variance of thirty feet is being sought. And then one fifty-six dash twenty-eight A eight requires a hundred-feet perimeter setback. What would be provided is forty-five feet, and a variance of fifty-five feet is being sought. Okay, bring us through this one, please.
Sure. So I don't think I need to do the entire overview, just getting specific to the townhomes. We've, the first one was the spacing between the buildings. We have twenty feet clear between the buildings, minimum. There's some places that might be slightly more, about twenty was the, I guess, the minimal spacing that we had between the buildings. It's a strategy we decided to deploy, because we, you know, were in front of the planning board going through multiple iterations of the project. When we had housing up in this area here, there was a lot of issues with tree clearing, proximity to wetlands, extra curb cuts, and, you know, we worked hard. We ended up, we lost some density, but we came up with this layout that worked, and we, you know, thought that it was reasonable, the builder is okay with it. We did meet with the fire department on multiple occasions and reviewed the plans. We added dry hydrants, we added notes about testing the existing dry hydrants. We went over the hydrant locations, the accessibility. We actually revised the grading in the back to make sure that there was at least, I think, ten feet of level ground behind each of the units, so they could get behind them, access them with a ladder. We provided this emergency-only curb cut on Fair Street, which will be gated, and there will be a Knox box there for the fire department. So, you know, we made sure that it worked and that it was good from a life safety perspective, good from what we thought was, you know, reasonable that's being built in other areas. I know there's other projects in Carmel that have, I think, the same exact twenty-foot spacing that are under construction now, so we're, so that's how we landed there. And then the one, in the multifamily zone in code, you're required to have a hundred-foot perimeter setback, which we, you know, meet in almost every case except one area here, which is to our internal property line on the golf course, so-
That's the forty-five?
Yeah, that's the forty-five feet is over here.
Just that one unit?
Yeah, it's just one unit, and it's-
Is that part of the lot line that's being adjusted?
It is part of the lot line that's being adjusted.
Could they have not taken that into consideration and jog it around?
Well, we have the clubhouse here, so we're straddling in between the clubhouse.
All right, so in speaking to, who from the Carmel Fire Department? You speak to the chiefs?
The chief, yeah.
Mike, did John have any say on this? Like, or your code enforcement officer, he's town fireman, Joe, I'm sorry.
Joe does not do this type of building. He does multifamily, commercial, and bars, restaurants.
Okay.
The fire department was handed this map, and I just actually texted with the chief, and he said that they are not against this project. They had no problem with it.
And then, did we get a positive recommendation or from the planning board on this? I didn't see anything internally, but has there been, like, positive feedback?
I don't know if they gave you anything positive or negative, but I'm not sure how that went. I apologize.
Okay, no worries.
They referred it a few weeks ago. I don't remember what their referral was exactly. I may not have even been here for that.
All right, board members, any questions on this section?
I have one. You have fifteen buildings, townhouse units? Am I seeing that?
Yes.
Okay. And every one of them have this twenty-foot buffer in between the two properties? Is that right, when they should be fifty?
In between the buildings, correct.
Is it possible that this, this plan is a little too ambitious for the property?
I don't think so. I mean, it's in line with other developments in this town, and the builder is okay with it. This is, you know, the layout that we came up with that works. They think there's a market for it.
Well, you're asking for thirty feet in between fifteen buildings, so-
Well, the builder's going to be okay with it, because they can sell more units.
Exactly.
So, I mean-
Exactly. He wants to sell the maximum.
I think thirty feet's a lot for something like this. I mean, it's kind of out of character, because they're so close together.
It's significant. That's one of the factors. It's more than double. You're giving only, not even half of what's required. For not one, not two buildings, but for fifteen buildings, it seems a little ambitious to me.
Well, I do believe there's precedent. I believe it's the Fairways Project has the same exact variance, and it's being built in pretty close proximity to this.
How long ago was that built?
I believe it's under construction now.
Did we get that? Did that ever come to us?
I don't think it needed any variances, did it?
It did come to us?
If they're less, I mean- Was it the same number, though?
And I think it's town and county.
No, that's, you're talking about the Toll Brothers on top of the hill. That's Fairways.
Oh, that's-
Because it was gateway Fairways subdivision is what, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, fifteen buildings that you're, you're more than doubling what's required, or you're half of what's required. It just seems a little ambitious to me, but I'm only one board member.
No, I have the same opinion. That was going to be my comment, too, yeah. To take the public's, you know, feelings into consideration, I can see that they feel that way.
So can the plate of the, footprint of the buildings be reduced to a certain degree, or elongated and shortened in width?
These footprints actually have been reduced significantly from our initial proposal, and we have lost a lot of units through the process. You know, this is a layout that we've went back and forth with the planning board, and, you know, we're commended for working with them and coming up with something that worked here. So, you know, we're confident that it's a good layout. We've looked at everything from, you know, life safety and access, and we think that it's, you know, it's reasonable. People are building this product, and it's not, you know, it's not atypical.
So the planning board and you guys worked together to gear this towards more of a cluster, we'll call it, just because it's not cluster housing, but a cluster, because to mitigate the need to tree, do tree clearing, basically, right? Is that what I'm hearing? So that whole top area above what you're showing here would have been where these would be built, but because you have trees-
I thought they couldn't build there, because it's wetlands.
Well, this area here was slightly outside of the wetlands. We would have been riding right up against the buffer, but we were able to put a small frontage road and get more units along here. But it's something, you know, the planning board didn't like it, and we all kind of agreed that this was a better layout.
There's two lines, one's touching the one street.
Yeah.
And then there looks like there's a second line. Is the first line what exists? No, no, it's going across the whole development, starting-
The wetland line?
The lot line.
Wetland line?
That's the wetland.
This one's the proposed lot line. The wetland line is here, and the buffer comes along here.
And that's the buffer?
So are you actually doing any favors by not building uplay, or you just physically can't because of the wetlands?
No, no, we could. This was just, it wasn't looked upon favorably, and we, you know, moved on from that layout, and we came up with something that- We're not going for a cluster through our zoning approach, but it's more like what you, you know, a cluster-style development, where we're trying to preserve open space, avoid the tree clearing, the additional curb cuts on Fair Street was also, you know, raised some concerns from a traffic perspective. So, you know, we worked this out. We did provide, you know, the only curb cut on Fair Street is for emergency accessible, remain gated.
Do you have a copy of that old map showing the-
I don't have one with me, no, not with me.
I just thought that you could show them what was proposed originally. It was more, it was like a long-running parallel line.
Yeah, there was almost a frontage road on Fair Street that we had at one point.
Chopped up.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't want people pulling out onto Fair Street at that point either. It was kind, at least the other side, they're, they have a traffic control device on to, once they get to the intersection.
It's a good point.
I think that was part of the-
I think what I would like to see is maybe the buildings that are along John Simpson, to have the further, the fifty-foot, or maybe some variation of that, because that's what people are going to see. From the road, that's what your neighbors, the people that live there, are going to see. And then maybe the ones further back, you can give them the twenty, twenty foot. So maybe take a building or two away from there, request less of a relief on that line, and then maybe, you know, if people want to live there, they're not, your neighbors aren't going to see it, because it's-
But what's stopping you, Will, if they went, instead of twenty feet, thirty feet between the buildings, and you make the buildings deeper, is there restrictions between the long sides of the buildings from one another?
I mean, we don't have a lot of room in the backyards to push the buildings out longer. We're also constrained by the wetland and the-
Well, is that a matter of convenience, or is that a code restriction? Right? It's convenience, because you want more yardage for the homeowners?
I mean, there's already not, you know, a giant backyard.
So I'm saying is you could achieve somewhat of the same square footage, but minimize the width in between the houses. I mean-
So make them deeper and narrower, to get, achieve the same numbers.
And wider apart from one another.
At the bottom along Simpson, he would have to keep that same line, because there is a setback to the front there.
Right.
Otherwise, in between and on top, there's-
Right, so you're essentially getting the same square footage per unit, right, to fill the numbers that you need to fill, but you're lessening the variance. You're not going to get fifty feet, I get it, but if we meet somewhere in the middle, right, twenty-five feet.
I do want to mention, we did consider John Simpson Road and what it's going to look like here. And this, we have a proposed berm here that's over ten feet tall, that's going to have a massive amount of landscaping on it. So you're, we did visual studies, and you don't see much at all of this development. That was something that was, you know, heavily reviewed by the planning board. We actually pushed ourselves out, a few meetings at the eleventh hour, because there were some last-minute concerns, what it's going to look like, and we did renderings and visual studies. And, you know, that did satisfy the planning board from a seeker's perspective on the aesthetics of the project.
So what are you talking about, the south part of this drawing right now?
Yeah, the bottom side of the drawing here, along the entire frontage.
Doesn't show the earthen berm and what's on it, you don't have that.
Yeah, this isn't the grading plan. I don't think I have the grading plan with me, but we did put, like, a huge berm with a heavy amount of landscaping along John Simpson here.
Why not just put a building or two less and meet what the code says? Or request less of relief, I mean-
We thought this was a reasonable amount of relief to ask for. I mean, this is the project that the builder intends to construct.
Each building has five units in it?
Four units, three-bedroom units.
So by reducing maybe two buildings, you're only losing eight, and that would make a difference, you losing eight units.
Yeah, we, I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure costs with this project, and we're, you know, we're doing an extension of a water main to provide a redundant loop for the town here. There's a lot that goes into this project. We've already dwindled our unit count down in order to, you know, preserve trees and reduce the number of curb cuts. We did, you know, work very hard on this layout with the planning board through multiple iterations, and, you know, this is the project that we intend to build. It's, and we think that it's reasonable. We think that it's in line with other things that have been approved in this town.
Is there any other enhancements on the site plan that, you know, because I don't see the earthen berm there with the plantings, but anything else for that community that they walk to, or is around? Like a putting green or a park?
We, so we actually do have a trail that comes through here on the backside and kind of winds around the berm and widens into some pollinator gardens. So there is some, like, enhanced landscaping here. We also have a swimming pool area with a bath house. There's going to be some benches and lawn areas. There's kind of a central amenity area over here. There is some existing, like, you know, putting greens and practice areas over here. I imagine that there will be some sort of agreement. that there will be some sort of agreement with.
Have you considered doing maybe more units in a building and then that way you could get the variance lower? So I mean, if you had, if you put an extra unit, had a five-unit building instead of a four-unit building, then you could increase those distances between.
Lengthen your clusters.
Yeah.
Make less of.
Make them more.
I mean, you get less end units, so your sales prices are, you know, you can't sell as many end units, but.
How many did you start with before this plan? What was your original count?
It's gone back and forth so many times, I don't remember.
All right. What was the worst-case scenario?
I mean, it was definitely, at least in the upper sixties. I, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
So you've only reduced it by eight? You haven't reduced it by that much?
Yeah. I mean, we, we did try kicking around concepts with the builder that we did longer buildings and they, they didn't like it. They didn't want to build it that way.
Well, I think you might have to go back to the drawing board because from what I'm hearing around me with the board members, it, it seems like everyone's gearing towards shying away from that variance. So I mean, you can take your gamble and we reject this or we won't afford you the opportunity to go back to the builder and take our comments and say, hey, can you go deeper and, and wider? Can you lessen the, the unit amount? You know, I'm, again, just speaking from what I think I'm hearing tonight, but.
How would it work procedurally? Could we do the other variances and adjourn this one?
Yeah, that's a question Greg, that I was gonna ask. I mean.
No, can you, can you break it down and, and request that you hold over this variance, but vote on the other due?
Of course. There are three different sets of relief. I thought you said seeker. Because one's not really tied to, to each other, not this one.
You can, you can entertain them all individually.
You'll get your chance. Okay, so that's.
Do we make the motion to hold this one over?
Hold on. Okay. So I, I guess we'd like to, you know, proceed with the other variances, but.
Yeah, I think without having the builders here, I just wanna, you know, play it safe. Go with the variances that we're comfortable with, but talk about the twenty-foot one further with my.
Okay. Before I do so, I think the public wants to be heard on this particular application. So, public, I'll open it up. We have your name and address from the previous.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that the fairways that you were talking about summit, when they, that's Toll Brothers right now, and I'm sure that this other new one is going to be Toll Brothers as well. And when they, they cut over three hundred trees down, okay, to make the fairway summit. We don't need any more trees cut down anywhere.
And respectfully, that's what they're trying to do. So it's kind of a give and take. Hey, you know, allow us a little more lenience.
And then I just wanted to reiterate about the endangered species that are in that swamp, you know, the wetlands area. That's all.
That would be all part of the seeker review, which would be done by the planning board.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charlie Cole. I live in Carmel.
What's your address?
On the Main Street.
What's your, what's the number? What's the number of your street, address?
Glonard Avenue. 118 Glonard Avenue.
All right. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Go ahead.
My question. I'm glad, just glancing at this plan here.
Just speak into the microphone, please.
I'm glancing at this plan here and all these buildings so close together with just twenty feet between them. Do you have a letter? I think you should have a letter from the fire department. I'm a life member of the fire department, but I think you should have a letter from the fire department approving this before you take any action on it.
That was already discussed and pointed out and Mike actually had spoken to the chief.
I'm sorry, Mike. I didn't hear you if you said that.
When you make application to the planning board, it gets referred, referred directly to the fire department. So they got this map early on, both maps, the old map and the new map. So they were aware. We discussed the gate onto, the lock gate onto Fair Street with the Knox box so they can get it all the way through, don't have to back all the way out. We, we discussed all this with the fire department a while ago.
Because I don't have the total plan here, you know, so I don't know what the roadway or the accessibility of the fire trucks getting to it. But if you get one of those buildings in the middle on fire and there's no access to it, twenty feet is not enough. You've gotta have the fifty feet, which is on the code. So I think they better redraw this thing or do whatever they gotta do or withdraw the plan because to me, just my own feelings, that's not acceptable. And I've been in a building field for quite a few years. Okay, that's it.
Duly noted. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this application? All right. You guys need to respond at all? Where is he? You guys good?
No, I have nothing further to add at this point.
All right. I'm gonna look for a motion to close this hearing.
Hold it over.
Yeah, but we're gonna hold it over. We'll do that adjudication. Yeah. Are you guys looking for, you want to hold this over or do you want to?
If it's possible to just clean up the variances and get those voted on that we're all good with, I'd like to proceed and just carry over the twenty-foot spacing one till I can.
That'll be a motion to hold over if the board wants to entertain on this last application.
Yeah, on this, on this application that's open right now. Look, I, my recommendation is we hold this over. Talk to your builder, the client that you're working for. Express what you've heard from this board and from the public to them and you can come back. This way it's, it's less paperwork procedurally. We can afford you that opportunity to come back next month or even two months from now, whatever. But my recommendation, but you, you decide what you want to do.
Okay. We, we'll hold it over till.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion for a holdover on this application.
Motion to hold over?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No, just, just application. You wish to proceed with the previous two, correct?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll proceed with the other.
Right, because they're kind of, they're not, they're gonna be intertwined at some point or, or potentially, but they're kind of separate unto themselves.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. At this point, there's no input from the public on any applic, or application. Okay. Application number one was dismissed without precedent prejudice. Application number two for Desio. Look for a motion.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Application number three was dismissed without prejudice. Application number four, Michael and Thomas Gilmore. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions on that application? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, granted. All right. Application number five, Centennial.
Motion to grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And application number six, also Centennial.
Motion to grant.
With the condition of a perpetual agreement?
This is, oh, yes.
Would you add that?
Would you add that?
With the condition of a perpetual agreement between the town of Southeast?
No.
No.
Neighbor and parcel.
The neighboring parcel.
Which is the same client.
The adjacent parcel.
But it should be recorded with the town of Southeast and with.
It'll be, uh, county clerk. It'll be recorded in the county clerk's office.
The county.
With the convenes.
I'm assuming it's gonna be an easement and a license. It's gonna be something that's perpetual, so it'll be recorded in the county clerk's office. And inform acceptable town council. You can submit it and I'll give you comments.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Uh, look for a motion to close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks. Everyone, have a good night.